Adrian N. Brightfelder, City Clerk. You are hereby directed to call a special session of the City Council to be held on Monday, November 6, 2023, at 5:15 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting a work session to receive an update on the Developers' Roundtable.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a special session of the Dubuque City Council for November 6, 2023. As a reminder to viewers and listeners, due to the nature of tonight's meeting topic, public input is not accepted. However, you may contact the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts. Attendance for the session is as follows. Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Councilmembers Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Rousell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
And City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. Our work session topic is the Developers' Roundtable update. I will turn it over to Greater Dubuque Development Corporation's Dave Lyons.
And as Dave makes his way, I want to make sure that we say, "Welcome back to Adrian." So, nice to have you back here at the desk with us. Just made sure to throw that out before we get started. Sorry if I mess your name up at least once tonight. I'm gonna try to run hard not to.
Mayor, council members, staff, and attendees, welcome. Dave Lyons, I live at 5804 Pleasant Drive, Des Moines, Iowa, but as you know, I operate here out of 900 Jackson Street. Today is going to be a high-level run-through of what we've called the Developers' Roundtable. And the goal would be to talk about the issues that were to be addressed, how we are presently addressing those with the help of Wally Wernemann, and then what next steps we may be looking at or maybe coming toward the council. So, again, the Roundtable is not new. Developer Roundtables were first started in 1992 by the city. The role was to create a platform for discussion of policy and between the city staff and those in the development community. The Roundtables were discontinued in 2013. From what I can tell in talking to everybody that was involved at the time, there really were a lack of issues to be addressed, so therefore, interest and attendance went down. And the city moved more into an individual discussion process with individual developers on individual projects. Earlier this year, concerns were raised regarding city policies, processes, and/or practices that could potentially impede development. So, one of the responses, and again, that's just one of the responses, was to reinstitute the Developers' Roundtable to document concerns and aid in communication and problem-solving. We reinstituted it with the initial goal of analyzing the concerns that had been raised in the business community. The process was to organize the work around three closed sessions that were attended by the public and then to by the development community, then open it to a public engagement session so we could share understandings and workings today, and then report back to the City Council. There were just under 100 businesses and development community members who were invited to be part of the process, and attendance was good. Between 16 and 80 attended each of the initial Roundtable sessions. And those sessions were held on July 27, August 24, and September 21. And then, as many of you know, we held the public engagement session on October 9. Disclaimer time. I'm an attorney, so I always do disclaimers. I was clear at the very beginning about my three biggest concerns, and they continue to kind of be my three biggest concerns. The first is, is that the city would get defensive. The second would be the developers would become impatient. And the third would be the public would not engage in the issues which were raised that require public outcomes, inputs, and added discussions. I'm happy to say the city has not been defensive. Throughout the meetings, we had the city manager and several key staff attend, but only there to listen and to respond to specific questions. So, it was a good process. The developers are impatient, but continued to be engaged and have continued to be engaged on specific issues and on general conversations. And the public, well, we'll see if how the public engages after activity comes out and starts to generate specific questions like costs of public infrastructure. Nothing about the effort was easy. You're likely to hear positives about the Roundtable, but you're just as likely to hear that some felt that we did not have the right facilitator for the task. It focused too much on policies and process. It didn't accurately represent a dire situation that some in the development community believed we were in. But I used my best effort and experience to organize a wide range of concerns, obtain input from everyone, not just the most vocal, and to develop a process and policy analysis that I thought could create viable and valuable outcomes for the community, public and private. Summary, high level. There was a general perception of those attending that the city was underperforming, particularly concerning the assets it has in place. The Roundtable's recommendation was to use a broader set of economic performance measures and comparisons to judge where we are, and bold-focused action by city leadership to move forward. We'll talk a little bit more later about the issue of underperforming. The key thing to remember is we are underperforming our opportunities and our assets. We're not underperforming the state. We're not underperforming other peer communities in the area. We'll talk about that a little later. But guess what? If Iowa is a slow-growth state, saying you're one of the best people in a slow-growth state is not going to get you success. Second, there were concerns that the present culture is not conducive to a public-private collaboration for growth and that consistency, trust, and access was lacking. The Roundtable recommends the city at all levels needs to engage the development community more directly in discussing and establishing development policy, and you'll see some of the first pieces of that in Wally's presentation. There are city development policies where some believe that the position of the city is a staff preference in early discussions versus a requirement of law or ordinance, which create delays or expenses negative to a development project, and that they have no avenue for appeal. The Roundtable, overall, recommends the city take action to assure requirements and preferences are clearly communicated and that all policies are adopted by the City Council. Some expressed the opinion that the shift of public infrastructure cost to private development, particularly if it were by preference versus law, would negatively impact growth. Others expressed the opinion that there needed to be a process, that they understood there needed to be public and private investment in infrastructure, but there needed to be a fair-share allocation process. The Roundtable recommended that any new ordinance be considered only if there's compelling public health and safety rationale and with the development engagement of the development community. And the last summary item was that there were concerns expressed that the city's approach to land cost and lease requirements did not reflect the market realities that private developers must contend with. For example, the length of a lease necessary for the private sector to be interested in investing. The Roundtable recommends the city clearly articulate its approach and balance that approach with the impact on growth and private sector investment. So, these are all high-level issues, and we'll unpack them a little as we go. Recommended actions. The three most apparent actions from the discussion about process and the discussion about preferences versus requirements were to improve the existing development review team process to decrease time and cost, to engage the development community earlier and more often in development policy discussions, including with city staff, elected leadership, and the public, and to avoid the adoption of new ordinances or development unless there was compelling reason, and to update the city Unified Development Code to clearly codify and communicate what's required by law and what's preferred by the city. And what I'd like to do is actually turn it over to the expert that then began working on those items to give you a pretty thorough review of how these three items are being addressed as we go in the city process. With that, I'd introduce Wally Wernemann, Planning Director.
Thanks, Dave. Wally Wernemann, Planning Services Director. Good evening, everyone. Mayor, City Council members. So, you hear the DRT used quite a bit, Developers' Roundtable. Well, I'm gonna be talking about the development review team portion of the Developers' Roundtable discussion. But before we get into it, let's talk about what is the Development Review Team. It began in 1990. It's actually made up of city staff, which I'll talk about in a little bit here and immediately in a couple of slides. You know, we host weekly meetings with property owners, developers, engineers, and other design professionals. You know, the DRT's responsibility is to review subdivision plots, site plans, everything for commercial, residential, office, and industrial. And we also get involved with reviewing conceptual development plans to help guide some of that growth before they actually submit a site plan. So, the development review process actually starts with a pre-application meeting, or sometimes we like to call it a concept plan meeting, where we sit down with city staff. We talk about the Unified Development Code, what they call SUDAS, which is our statewide urban design assessment or specifications. Those are engineering standards, utilities, site access control, stormwater management. And we also just talk about the entire process to explain to them, you know, how's it gonna flow, where are they gonna be submitting, you know, if they have to go through some additional levels of review. And then, we take it to that plan review level that goes to the Development Review Team, where we actually go through all those specific codes. We sit at the table every Thursday and review that with the engineer, the architect, the developer, the property owner. They're all welcome to attend the meeting. We go over design standards, and in addition, it may require multiple reviews depending on how thorough the initial application is submitted. And then, from there, we have a construction review and approval. That's actually handed by the Inspections and Construction Services Department. They actually, quite a few times, they're actually doing the building plan review in conjunction with the site plan review. So, sometimes they might have reviewed the building plan, waiting for site plan approval pending, so they can issue a billing permit for the work to start. So, those core members of the Development Review Team are the Planning Services Department. We have three individuals actually that attend from our office. Sheena Moon is the point person. She handles and facilitates the Development Review Team process overall. And then, we have Travis Sholvagen, who is an assistant planner in addition to myself that attends those meetings. The Engineering Department also is involved with that core group. Nate Kiefer is kind of the point person for the Engineering Department there because there are multiple engineering staff that attend the meeting. They discuss everything from stormwater, traffic, site distance, you know, sanitary sewer, stormwater. That's all managed through Nate, so he's kind of a point person from them. And then, we have our Water Department, Fire Departments, and then our Inspections and Construction Services. Now, those are the core members, when I say core members, but we also send it out to almost every city's department. There are situations where the Health Department may attend if there's a restaurant, or the Parks and Rec Department. Our Leisure Services Department will attend for parks, park development, or anything that may involve with some land that they have to provide maintenance on, and then also the Public Works Department. So... So, one of the recommendations that came out of the Developers' Roundtable is to improve the design review team process. So, what the Planning Services staff did is we worked with our DRT members, our core DRT members, to prepare an anonymous survey that was sent out via email to 24 individuals, and these are individuals that are architects, engineers, land surveyors, who actually submit site plan and subdivision plans as part of the DRT process. And of these 24 individuals that were selected, we actually picked them out specifically because these are the individuals that are constantly submitting plans to our office and are the most familiar with the DRT process. We do have companies that may submit one plan, one off from an outside firm, but we felt since these individuals are the ones really working through the process, we'd get their, gather their input. So, included in your packet of information was the survey with all the results, but the survey was composed of 20 questions that were related to the Development Review Team process. We asked questions that ranged from, you know, how easy is it to work with staff? Is there good communication? To, you know, what checklist? What information being submitted? You know, what's your reaction with regards to how the process is flowing? You know, what's your, how have you worked with other municipalities that have a similar process? You know, just a whole bunch of questions. And then, we had a lot of follow-up questions with regards to those. If you answered no, please provide us more comments and information about that. So, I just want to go over at high level some of the survey results that you see before you. So, I mentioned, we sent it to 24 individuals, and we got seven responses back. So, you may look at that and say, "That's kind of a low turnout." But a lot of those 24 individuals may have three people from the same individual firm. The other thing is those seven people that have submitted the responses, they handle almost 90% of the site plan reviews. So, if you think of some of the four core engineering and architecture firms that are in our community, those are the main people that have submitted, and they're actually present at a meeting that I'll talk about coming up here. The other thing I just want to point out here, it took them 18 minutes on average to answer that survey, so they did spend some time thinking about their responses. So, like I indicated, we held that survey, but then we also went one step above. We held a three-hour work session where we actually invited those 24 individuals to attend, and we had 15 city staff people that were present at that meeting. We had six individuals that represent local and adult-town architectural and engineering firms. Once again, those core members that showed up submitted about 9% of the site plans and subdivision plan applications. But the main intention for that work session was to gather feedback regarding their experience in the DRT process and discuss how the process can be modified and approved. And we actually used that survey as kind of the framework for our presentation. So, we actually stepped through, we talked about it, and once again, that survey was completely anonymous, and it was actually a great, great discussion. We actually had the city manager and Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, where other staff members that were present at the meeting. I thought that it may only take a couple hours. Well, guess what? We used the full three hours of great in-depth conversation with regards to it. So, what did we learn through the conversations and the survey? So, we found out that, you know, staff's easy to connect with and communicate with staff. You know, there's great comments here. Sheena's a great single point of contact for the process. The question's out of her area expertise. She'll connect you with the appropriate person. The key here is that we have one point person. So, when someone's submitting a site plan to help navigate them through the process, that's one thing that we heard out of the Developers' Roundtable was, "Where's a single point of contact?" You know, "Where do I start?" And so, you're gonna start in the Planning Services Department, you're gonna start with Sheena Moon, and she'll get you going and help you through the process. So... Other things that we learned about, and we keep talking about electric plan review software, opportunities to say, "Hey, is there something that we can help organize, provide information, so you can submit electronically?" Which we do accept, receive applications electronically, it's just email. But is there an actual review software so we can put that in that can check in, check into that? And what was most interesting about that was the attendees discussed how an online submitter portal would be nice, but the city should be very careful to execute the process well and make it functional, too. They commented that some cities have made their process worse because the online tool does not work well. And they provided specific examples during our conversation of, "This city uses this, and it's cumbersome, and it's just, they just want to make sure if we're gonna do it, we need to make sure we have a process that work well." The other thing we learned is that we need to do a better job on timely reviews and coordinated responses. So, the survey information you have here are just a couple of clips of questions that we asked of them. You know, they discussed how the city timelines for review and approval are not terrible, but it would be beneficial to have a better understanding of where they're at in the entire process. They felt that the review process can sometimes drag out, and having a meeting for every plan review is not necessary. They talked about very specifically some questions about the amount of time, and then timely responses from individuals as part of the DRT. The other thing that we learned during the discussion is that the DRT process is working well. So, we asked them to rank the process from 1 to 5, 5 being highly satisfied. All seven of them responded with a 4. They had a lot of conversations with regards to it, said they liking everyone around the table together at the same time. You know, it's super helpful. The process, the feedback is timely, the ability to have direct access to those doing a review, the ability to have a discussion with all parties involved in one setting. You know, a lot of things we hear over and over. The one thing they wanted to make clear is, "We don't want electronic plan software where we just submit it and you guys disappear. We still want to be meeting every week, face-to-face, present, and then have a virtual option for the developer, someone who may not be locally, to be able to attend." So, just kind of summarize some of that information there from what else that we've also learned was, once again, that in-person meeting is highly valued and appreciated. It was interesting, they said the city Dubuque's DRT process is better than the surrounding communities, including Davenport, Iowa City, Correville, Cedar Rapids, and several Chicago suburbs. They talked about having all the code regulations in one place for ease of access. Right now, if you wanted to look at the building code, you go to the Building Department section. If you want to look at the engineering code, it's another section, and Unified Development Code. So, we're coordinating all those codes and ordinances, and we're gonna place them in one section of the Development Review Team on the planning website. So, there's one place where they can go and access all those codes and ordinances. And then, they also said, "Be clear on what is a preference versus a requirement." So, we've been taking that to heart. So, anytime we have a Development Review Team, since the first Developers' Roundtable meeting that we had, we made it very clear during that DRT process that this is either a recommendation or that this is a requirement. I don't, it's not a preference, it's a recommendation that we refer to it as versus a requirement. And if it's a recommendation, we explain why are we recommending it? It's that you can follow our recommendation, this is what the requirement is, but a lot of times, those recommendations are helping provide information with regards to cost savings, certain things that they may not think about in the future if they're looking at additional development at the site. They may develop one portion right now, but it's like, "Okay, are you thinking about doing an addition?" That's gonna kick in different code requirements. The future, you might want to look at doing certain things. So, a lot of topics like that. And then, we end the survey with, you know, people just asking if they had some general comments, and here's two quotes that we placed up there that was at the end of the survey. Says the Dubuque has a very good system. It could be great with a few minor adjustments. Holding reviewers accountable to provide timely responses is key. And then, having worked in many communities, counties, and states, Dubuque is pretty fortunate to have what we have for a community our size. The staff is knowledgeable and available to help on projects. Okay? The next recommended action I want to talk about is to engage the development community earlier and more often in the development of policy decisions, including the city staff and elected leadership and public. So, there are changes already being made. We're listening to the developers. One thing that was changed, actually at our last work session that we had with regards to economic development, was public versus private street policy. We've adopted a policy where it'll be at the discretion of the developer to decide if they want their street to be public or private. Where tonight, you'll have some information with regards to location of water and sewer mains on your agenda, and then also the use of PVC versus ductile iron pipe. So, those are certain things that are being reviewed right now under discussion. But the one thing about having a Developers' Roundtable, again, is to have actual place where we can send information to and bounce off a larger community. In 2013, when that kind of lapsed and there was just not a lot of involvement, one question was brought up to the Developers' Roundtable about a policy that came up, and it said, "Well, how do you know who had an opportunity to vent that?" Well, there was no Developers' Roundtable put together where we could send that out and say, "Hey, development community, here's one source. This is gonna be discussed at an upcoming public hearing. Here's an opportunity for you to review and attend that meeting if you'd like to voice your concerns." The other recommended actions was to avoid the adoption of new ordinances on development unless there is compelling public case, and update the city's Unified Development Code to clearly codify and communicate what is required by law and what's preferred by the city. So, now, it's time to update the Unified Development Code. So, you've heard me say, "We're holding off, we're holding off." Now, we had an opportunity to go through a process, we're finally there. So, you'll be seeing an RFP to update the Unified Development Code coming here shortly. And then, also, in addition, we're also reviewing and commenting on the statewide urban design specifications. So, the Engineering Department, Water Departments, all those individual departments with the city that use that code, we're reviewing those regulations, updating them, because there are some specific specifications that apply to the city Dubuque. When those code, that SUDAS, was developed, it was developed for the Des Moines metro area as it grows. And if you imagine their topographies, like this nice rolling topography, right? Then you get to us in the Driftless region, it's like, "Whoa, some of those code requirements just will not work here." So, there are some specifications that we may have to modify to work for Dubuque, but we need to be more clear with reasoning why we're doing that. And then, one of the discussions that we'll be involved with Unified Development Code is actually creating a task force for off-site improvements, getting some individuals together from the community to actually talk about that with regards to how that's gonna work from an ordinance standpoint and financial standpoint. When we did the Unified Development Code update back in 2009, we had a task force for signs, we had a task force for various other aspects in the Unified Development Code. So, it'll just be another opportunity to get that task force together for off-site improvements. So, I'm gonna hand it back over to Dave Lyons to kind of get a little bit more about the Developers' Roundtable.
Thanks, Wally. And of course, we will both leave a lot of time for questions and answers at the end, and Wally will be back up. So, you heard the three kind of process-oriented issues that came up, and you've heard Wally's response. I think the response is generally hitting the mark. In the Roundtable, we heard that there were concerns that things would take too long, people would not get back to them quickly, and that the staff was not empowered to make decisions and resolutions at these meetings. And I think the processes which Wally has outlined is gonna assist in that. I would note that the task force that Wally mentioned a second ago in relationship to off-site improvements is probably one of the more critical discussions that's gonna need to occur. This is a quote that came from, I believe, the second or third Roundtable. The specificity of it, I think, tells you that there is a high level of interest and a high level of engagement the community's gonna want on this ordinance when it passes. Everybody knows that it costs money to expand a community. Everybody knows that there are both public and private benefits. This is an area where I very much applaud the creation of a task force that gets developers and business owners involved at the very beginning. There are some good models around the state where there is more specificity to when an off-site improvement cost is done and how it's calculated. I think that's work to continue, but I think we're making progress. Another general issue, the level of additional engagement the city has outlined, and Wally has developed, and Mike has been following up on, and others, is good, but you should expect additional discussion and recommendations. There are feelings of significant frustration over past projects or interactions that will need to be overcome. Those were overcome with continuing conversation. But again, it's kind of fun to watch this happen in real time. One of the nasty conversations was about where water mains would go, and you're addressing that. One of the conversations about a project was about PVC pipe versus ductile steel. You're addressing that. So, this ongoing conversation will float items up for policy consideration, and I think what's happening is exactly what the development community requested, which is all policies presented to and approved by council. But there are gonna be difficult issues which continue to arise, and this is not Dubuque-specific. This, I see this in many communities. They arise when development policies and development projects overlap, where you're having to deal, a project presents itself, and you're having to make kind of a judgment about whether it's an A or a B, or whether Rule 2 or Rule 3 applies. Those are the ones that are gonna have to have a process in the future of engagement and discussion ongoing, because there are two very valid points that have to be met. One is the city should never put itself in a position of having development terms dictated to them, but at the same time, a developer should never feel that their project has been treated differently or outside of existing city policy. So, there is no perfect system. These will continue to arise. You should anticipate people will call and they'll say, "My project." Well, the most important thing to listen to is, what is the policy which is being concerning or raising the item? How does that policy appear? How is it impactful? And what would be the next step the community would take on that policy? Recommended actions continue. Cities should establish policies on land ownership, sale, and leasing that clearly define the goals to be achieved, how those goals are balanced with the need for growth and private investment, and under what circumstances and authority those policies can be changed or waived based on the type or location of a development project. This one was more, I think, toward the project folks and the business folks than the type or location of a development project. This one was more, I think, toward the project folks and the business folks than the technical folks. They were basically saying, I have somebody who wants to have a 50-year lease, and that's longer than the city normally does. Or someone will say, well, wait a minute, why is that project getting charged X dollars per, you know, acre, and this project is getting charged more? Why should a truck stop be treated differently than a housing development? They also have questions about where. Why is something downtown treated differently than something out west? That's a communication process that I think we need to all work a little bit on to clearly and on an ongoing basis, remind people that this is what the policy is, and this is what it means either by utilization or by geography, and take input. The last one was to analyze economic data, improve community comparisons, and focus on growth. So I've talked a lot about the initial kinds of projects and what people thought was wrong and why we lost them. And I think they're being addressed. And people talked about what's the interaction and level of engagement between the city and the developers so we could help bring more projects here. One of the things that I didn't hear any disagreement on at all, but a level of concern was growth, particularly population growth. And people are sitting and they're seeing the power in the community and the collaborational spirit, et cetera, and then they're looking at our population growth and saying, is something wrong? Well, we started to do the research, and so this is too small to see, but the most important thing is how the black line looks versus all the other lines. Black line is Dubuque. The blue lines are our surrounding communities, metro areas, or the state. So as we pull the data, no, we are not underperforming our peers, and in many cases, we're outperforming them. We're not underperforming the state, and in many cases, we are not underperforming, we're outperforming. And when you look at the data, you can begin to see the, what is pointed out as future focal points. So the first four I have in green, it's hard to read there, but, so if you're talking about job growth, unemployment rate, labor force participation, Dubuque's in there, hitting, hitting well. When you start looking at some of the issues on future trends, average weekly wage, we're not hitting very well. Family poverty rate, you're doing great. So that's one of the things to really look at is, usually when average weekly wage is low, poverty is high. So you're doing something right. The economy's doing something right to maintain that type of a balance. Population, by age, upper right-hand, again, we always know that that's kind of a concern. Population change is in the lower right-hand corner. So the big one in the middle is Johnson County, Iowa City, University Town in Eastern Isle. So the others, as you can see, are average to above average with the state average. But if you take the seven metro counties out of the equation, the ones around Des Moines as a center of government, all of these look good compared to that. So that became what I referred to at the last issue is, is what do we, so we're working through these problems, we're looking for resolutions, what's the big issue in common that drives everybody's focus? And that's the pole star that we got back from the group as a whole. We want to grow, and we think we can do more of that and live up to our economic potential. Do not compare ourselves to Iowa averages, compare ourselves to what would be top-tier cities throughout the Midwest. But I think everybody at the roundtable, and I've been researching since, no, that's not going to be very easy. You've got a lot of headwind right now. Existing socioeconomic growth of the state is not good. We are not a fast-growing state, so we're not picking anything up simply by being in Iowa. Our historic growth drivers, some of them are missing right now, and I'll hit that in just a second. And I'll hit the issue of immigration, and then I'm going to probably not go over, because you see this all the time, there are certain things about Dubuque that are in the not-fast growth rationale. For example, across the Midwest, you know, Columbus, Ohio, to, you know, Boulder, Colorado, percent of government presence and spending in those communities is high. In Dubuque, it's low, and actually, I believe it's probably the lowest government spending in the, in the major metros. Major university systems, you've got a great set of small colleges, and they collaborate. But if you look at Madison, or Springfield, or other places, there is a monster university there, which is driving innovation and growth. Major healthcare centers, interstate transportation, airports, et cetera. Those are all situational issues that are going to be difficult to address. On population, that first point I made was, being in Iowa has been being very helpful. This is Iowa population increase over the last, you know, 50, 70 years by our neighbors. And as you can see, we're not very good there at the last one. This one is really interesting. People were wondering why we had a little bit of flattening out of what growth we had been seeing. The statisticians were helpful on this. They basically said, one of the, one of the growth factors Dubuque had always counted on was kids returning when they were having kids or their parents were aging. This was, this was seen, known as a return city. The problem is, is the age of the people who would be returning are the kids whose families left in the 1980s and 90s. So we're looking for them to be returning, and we're not where they return. Their parents went someplace else, or they don't have a connection to Dubuque, so their kids aren't being brought back to Dubuque's excellent schools. So that will pass, it's going to take a couple more years. Immigration, again, not a surprise, but its differences are, are pretty stark. U.S. population, the percent of first-generation immigrants that make up U.S. population is 13.9%. For Iowa's whole, significantly less, 5.4%. For Dubuque County, 2.7%. For Polk County and Johnson County, the two fastest-growing areas, 9.2, 10.5, even Lynn County, 3.95. So there's, where's growth? Well, it's not here. I don't have an answer for that, but the issue is, is there needs to be an answer, because if you look at fast-growing communities that, oh, we'd like to be like them and have a growth rate like that, they're not 2.7% on immigration issues. One of the things I do want to touch on, and I want to have Wally add a little bit more to, what can people do? Well, one of the big things is housing. People can't move here if there isn't a place available, accessible, or affordable to them. And as you know, we were 1,800 to 2,000 units short of what our general workforce needs would create for housing. And I'm going to say, if you took that issue on, and, and you're hitting the ball out of the park. Wally, you want to explain a little bit?
Yeah, just, just to add that is, you know, you listened, right? You realized, we got to grow, and we need to make some policy changes, and using the great economic tools of TIF and urban visualization, the Housing and Community Development Department, Economic Development Department, and Planning Services Department put our heads together and came up with those policies and the programs and the incentives, and you've definitely seen our return right now. Right now, we have 2,278 lots or units that are being proposed, either already built or already under construction. And every day, I'm getting calls from developers, I need land, I want to build, I need land, I want to build. Where, where's available land? You'll see this get sent out to you almost every city council meeting, you'll see additional units being added on there. Just recently, we have Cedar Lake Apartments out in Cedar Lake subdivision, they're looking at 42, 42 market-rate unit apartments. And we're finding pockets around our community where higher-density multifamily residential's being developed. And even today, we had a great catalyst, catalyst kickoff meeting for Yuna Driksen and her NEA Neighborhood Group located down on Central Avenue, just a single, or a two-story building, three residential units in the downtown. But what are we doing? We're getting people using, utilizing those under vacant buildings, make them into housing, and the more we get individuals living in higher-density areas in our, in our downtown to help generate some of those services. And then also, hearing from our, the workforce, we need people to work, so we need to get people here to live and have an affordable place to do it. So I just want to say kudos to you guys. We have a lot of work ahead of us, but it's great to see that this is being implemented. And not only are individuals in Dubuque noticing, but a lot of the other municipalities around are noticing in this, especially when we were at the Iowa Housing Conference, we actually got a kudos on a handout that the manager was handing out at our meetings, and it's just certain city staff, too, even though we weren't supposed to hand out handouts.
But we aren't sharing all the tricks. Yeah, because, you know, we need to be ahead in this. So I just want to point on housing. Childcare, another area, didn't come up in the roundtable, but comes up within the overall context of angst about being able to employ and grow in this community. I have to say, some of the things that are happening right now in childcare are crushing it, and we are going to see some phenomenal stuff. And that kind of brings up the point, one of the, I think it was Tara Dugan raised the issue. She said, we need that same excitement and can-do attitude applied to getting private investment unleashed in the community, and getting it excited about being in Dubuque and moving forward, just like our economic process of getting new housing and getting new childcare. The, I think we already covered this a bit, one of the things I did like to note was, is that as items pop up, it was really interesting to watch as a facilitator, when people would start having the conversation, so why are you honked off? Well, I'm honked off because I did a project and I was required to do this, and I don't think that was the right issue. All right, now we know, we're going to look at it, go through the process, and resolutions become. So part of it is, is that it's really good that these ongoing conversations occur, so problems can be floated, problems can be analyzed. If we need to, we can go to the public to get more opinion back on them. But there are still issues and projects where disagreement continues, and hopefully, we're making some, some good progress. And hopefully, the city doesn't get defensive, and hopefully, the public, the private sector doesn't get impatient, and hopefully, the public engages in this conversation through their council. Next steps to consider, just as the facilitator kind of exiting this first part of the process. There's a group that's been developing, being some of their own concepts for improving growth in Dubuque. Much of that was outside the scope of the present roundtable. I expect they'll be coming to the council to discuss if and how that integrational planning should occur. So the roundtable wasn't the only conversation occurring. I believe it would be useful to continue a roundtable, a developers' roundtable, but as a monthly technical group of city staff and developers. As you can see, the reaction has been pretty good to get everybody together on a monthly basis and hash out issues that are technical, ordinance-related, SUDAS-related, et cetera. The roundtable was really composed of a lot of additional businesspeople and professionals in the business and development area. I think that larger development policy owner discussion probably needs to be held on its own, away from the technical issue, and it should probably be held as often as it needs to be held, which means when the council begins to hear enough questions and concerns on a particular issue, or the city manager hears it, it might be a good time to say, okay, next month, we're going to get the round, bigger roundtable, we'll call it something different, together. What are the issues that aren't getting resolved within the technical group? What big policy issues are coming up? What legal changes are being required of the city that it's going to have to implement? There needs to be a place for that conversation. And hold them as often as you need, but I think otherwise, I'm done with the presentation. And Wally, unless you have anything else, we just take questions.
Question, Wally.
Okay. Well, thank you both. So let's open it up. Questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Thank you so much. This is, I'm glad this process has started, is continuing, and will continue. So it's interesting, something you said in the early part, Dave Lyons, that the developers mentioned that it would be helpful if they knew where the project was in the process. It just reminded me that when I, when I order $20 order of food, they send me an email that says they received my order. Then they send one that says the food is being prepared, checking for quality, out on the road, they're at your door, go get it. And that's for 20 bucks. And these are million-dollar projects. I know that we can't, it's not done in 20 minutes like it is when I make a call for food, but I totally get it. That's what people are used to, and if you are able to develop a process, that's a check, 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 check. Maybe we can get something that every three days or so, that they get another check and let them know where it is. And I know you're checking into that. So do you have plans, perhaps, in a, you know, in a beginning state to address that issue?
We do. The, the main issue, there's, there's two items. One of them is knowledge, and the other is self-service. Right now, I think the focal point is on an online system that generates knowledge. So I want to be able to check where my application is, what it's waiting on, if anybody's waiting on me, when it's expected. That real-time activity is much easier than, well, maybe I'll call Sheena again, or, or maybe I should just wait a couple more days. Just that first step of real-time tactile feel for where my stuff is at is kind of what we're trying to get first. And then after that, Wally will tell you that there's a difference in opinion among the developers to say, okay, now be careful. Whatever system you have has to work with our system.
Right. So during that three-hour work session with the, the engineers, architects, and surveyors, that was discussed at length, and they actually provided us some suggestions of some software to look into. Some of the firms are actually are using it, some have actually have approached other cities that are using different types of software. So now we're compiling that list of information, reaching out to those organizations to have demonstrations. Actually, one of the local firms has said, hey, Wally, we use four of these softwares right now, why don't you set up some time for us to come in, and we'll demonstrate some of those to see what works best. But they were very careful in saying, make sure if you do it, you're going to do it right, because we don't want something that's just not going to flow right. So for instance, there's one software that was being used that only one person can check into it, access it, go through it, and we want to be able to have multiple people to log in to be able to look at that. So we're definitely having those conversations for that, Mr. Resnick.
Great. Thank you very much. And very quickly, I got a call from a person who's attended many of these, and he says that one thing that they were hoping for is more access to council, right? And I, and I talked to him about, you know, we as, we represent the public, including the developers, but the things that, the information that we get, the books, the pamphlets, whatever, need to be public. Is it all right that we go to public with, you know, because that's, you know, I'm not going to take any secret materials. And yet, you know, the, the, the developer roundtable is a working group, and, you know, they, they're brainstorming things. So they're not necessarily wish that every new brainstorming idea makes the public, you know, get into public. So there's a conundrum, they're hoping for more council access, but I tell you what, if it comes to me, it has to be public, or else they shouldn't give me any information. So I know there's legal issues, too, involved with that. So that, that's kind of... So that, that's kind of a hard nut to, to crack sometimes when, you know, we set the policy as a council, and then, then the staff does everything they can to put that policy into, into practice. So do you have any comments about what I just said?
I do. Actually, in the roundtable conversation, there's kind of two pieces to that, to that argument or that concern. One of them is, as you've outlined, is people do not feel comfortable, do not feel like there's an open access, to say, "Hey, I don't like the way I was treated. Hey, I don't think this policy is being implemented correctly." I, I know I heard that, but there was a second piece to that that I think was probably the more important one. And that is, we'd like to be more involved, engaged in the conversations of policy before it actually reaches a critical point of you having to make a decision. So that's that policy versus projects tension. So I think a lot of that can be taken care of if people feel like their, their interests were discussed, were reviewed, were shared with you by staff, and, and you just don't agree, that's one issue. If what has happened and, and has been developed is not shared with you, and you only have one option presented to you, that's the other concern. So on that point I made about, this is ongoing communication at the staff level and at the leadership level. The better we do on the front end, the less I think that issue comes out on the back.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Ms. Farmer.
So Dave, can I just have a follow-up to that? Because my reach out from the community is that they would like to see more of our presence in the roundtable meetings and not just necessarily on the policy side. And I know it's a double-edged sword. I know it's very complex, and I know that we're trying to normalize, if you will, the procedures, the processes, and just how the communication is evolving. And my gosh, it's really, from where we started and where we are today, you're right, it's really moving in the, the trend is our friend. I mean, it's moving in the right direction. Communications are, are starting to become more dialogue between the city and the developers. But I'm a little perplexed because where I'm sitting, you know, I'm a businessperson. I understand the importance, if not the most important, aspect of our business community to talk about the growth that you had just detailed. And the concern that I'm hearing is that we should be there to hear, and that we should be visible, and it should be transparent. And I understand legally, if it's an issue that deals with taxpayer dollars or other kinds of decisions, that, you know, it may not be that appropriate. But I'm still perplexed because I personally would like to be there for all of the roundtable, whether I'm just sitting in the back, listening, or whether I'm able to have case in comment. So can I have your thoughts?
Yes. First of all, I own part of that. When I set this process up, my natural inclination and experience across the state has been, people need to say what they need to say early on. And it needs to be unfiltered, and it needs to be something that they can say, but doesn't become damaging to them, and isn't, they don't feel threatened in the environment in which they say it. So I set this process up as an invitation-only process for developers and et cetera, and built in the public engagement session. I think we're to the point now that any of the, not the technical roundtable, but on the, say quarterly roundtable, that each, every one of those should be open. So I think we're to the point now where, yeah, it probably made sense in, in starting. I don't think it makes sense anymore, and I, my recommendation is, is these future roundtable conversations where issues have boiled up and there are various opinions, they should be public discussions.
Yeah, thank you, because I really think it's important that we're visible as well, and that we're hearing that there is a need for open dialogue, or at least, you know, that we, we are receptive to what's going on and just understand, just information, if you will.
And I think informationally, if we can, the rules you operate under are relatively unknown and arcane, if I can put it that way, council. For example, one of the issues, again, I just caught it as, as an aside, was that somebody wanted to say, "Well, look, I know I can't talk to the council all at a whole, so I'm going to take the same materials and the same conversation, and I want to meet with them one hour after one hour," you know, and, and so I can inform them. But the problem is, is that the interpretation of the law, which is correct, is that's a rolling meeting, and we're in trouble.
It's called a serial meeting.
Serial meeting.
And it was the, I believe, Chickasaw County, no, Warren County Board of Supervisors that created that case law back in 2016. But in addition to that, the Iowa Public Information Board actually issued an opinion in response to a school board inquiry about whether something like that would be possible. And they indicated that it would possibly technically comply with the law, but would not meet with the spirit and the inadvisability of it, because it could turn on a dime from okay to not okay and be a full-on open meetings violation, would be a problem. So just so you all know, I'm working on a bigger piece for you related to all of that to summarize it and for that to be available.
And if we could develop something so that people who want to communicate with council know, here's safe, here's, oh, this is, this is when I'll get the answer that says, "I can come, but I can't talk." What? Oh, no, there's a reason for that. If we could get that done in a way, we could not only, you know, help people understand what you can and can't do because of state law, but also how best for them to frame the issues and the conversation, to bring it to you in a way that you can be engaged. So. Good. That was a great point, though.
Yeah, and thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Sel.
Thank you. I think this question was more directed towards Wally. I really was impressed with all of the things that have happened already. And, well, just number one, the fact that this is, this roundtable is in place. But when I'm part of a group, I like to know what are our, our goals and, and our outcomes. But I'm also interested in, do we send feedback back to the participants and say, "Wow, we've accomplished this, and this, and this, and we're working on this," so that people can want to stay engaged for the long haul.
Right. So communication's two ways, right? Instead of being just talked to, we need to inform, we listen to them, we provide feedback to them. We did that when we went through and had this three-hour work session dealing with just the DRT. We listened to them, we provided information. So gathering the information, providing the feedback will be, would be a key. We have not met since then, the developers' roundtable group specifically. We have an opportunity to meet with that, to gather all the information, and then reach back out to the, to the developers' roundtable as a whole. Because the DRT members that were invited were more of the architects and engineers, not so much some of the larger, broader individuals, that were more focused on, I would say, the policy discussion as opposed to, how do you submit a site plan, you know? So, and then having that opportunity to continue to engage, because I think we need to engage monthly just to keep it going, so people are aware of. The other thing is, like, like Dave said, is like, only specific individuals are invited to this discussion, and you may be hearing from some of your constituents saying, "Hey, how do I get involved with? How do I be able, you know, reach out?" And, and we can always reach out to our, our department and provide some information, but my goal is to be able to have a resource that we can bounce information off to the developers as a whole and get feedback. So we have that ability. When we do a public hearing or engagement about ordinance change or a policy decision, they have an opportunity to provide that information, and then we're going to bring that to you guys as a whole, when we go through those ordinances and unified development code changes.
So you could maybe do an email blast to the group that said, "These are the things we've accomplished thus far," you know, and get their feedback prior to just waiting to the next meeting.
Right. So currently, right now, Dave, Dave Lyons has been our facilitator. We have been out of it. So we wanted to kind of remove the city from the process. We wanted an open dialogue discussion. We didn't want the city communicating, saying, "This is what we're saying." So now, that next step that we're talking about, I was doing a broader discussion where then the city can step in and say, "Hey, we're hearing you, we're listening to you, this is what we've done so far." So like the updates where you're going to be revering to how we deal with PVC and ductile iron, you know, public versus private street, what are we doing at the DRT level, provide that information to them. And then also have an opportunity where they may bring up a suggestion that we can bring to the group as a whole, so.
Thanks. And, you know, I'll just add that, you know, any clarification that we come up with as a city is beneficial to all of us, because when we make decisions, we like to know that we have all the information and that it's clear and concise for us as well. So I just applaud all the people that are participating to help us make this process and just our community as a whole better. Thanks.
Thank you. And after each of the meetings, I send out what I call the infamous one-pager. It's never one-page, but it's pretty short, that basically recaps what we talked about and what we're going to do. I know the city's been working on this and things like the task force, et cetera. I have not communicated that back yet. I was waiting until after this conversation, because I would also like to communicate back the, the color commentary that would come as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson. It's pretty apparent to me that we're not where we want to be, and that we're working towards that. It's also pretty apparent to me that we're a lot closer to that than we've been because of the work of the last six or seven months, and I much appreciate that. This whole thing is about communication. While, while we can't put ourselves into a private meeting and gather a lot of data without some risk of skirting the, or stepping into the open meetings law, anybody at any time, if you get your message refined well enough to, to be, to be up for public scrutiny, can send it to the mayor and city council and get it on an agenda here to be talked about, to be digested. And it'll get taken seriously, it'll get looked at, it'll get read, it'll hopefully get understood. That's, that's the path to, to some of the resolution, is we've, we've got to be not afraid to talk about some of these things here at an open council meeting. But I do applaud everybody for coming to the table and being honest and helping the city find its way. I don't think we're as developer unfriendly as some people think that we are, and I think that our numbers prove that. I think we've got some areas that, that there's unnecessary friction that we can fix, and I think that, that our staff is moving in that direction. I think that David Lyons is, first of all, is about the smartest man I know, and I know a lot of people. But it's, I think he's the right guy to be able to facilitate that, because he's not in our pocket, we're not in his pocket, he's not in the developer's pocket, there's no, there's no connection. It's just a really smart guy that's, that GDTC is able to fund to, to help us solve this problem and facilitate it. And I've seen him solve some other things. If anybody in the room are old enough to remember the Iowa Trust, where a lot of money left Dubuque. We were lucky enough that the insurance commissioner of Iowa was David Lyons, and he tracked it down to a bank in suburban Denver, Colorado, and brought it home. He's pretty good at the things that he does. He's pretty good at information gathering and mega-data analysis and getting it down into a, a common denominator that we can all understand. So I hope everybody will continue to support his efforts in, in helping us all understand this. I'm comforted that we're in a better place than we were six months ago. I'm comforted that we're moving towards a better place than that. And I think like everything in government, it's going to be an ongoing process. I don't think this will ever be, "Hey, we're done. Let's forget about this conversation." I think that the conversation is, because things are going to change. The conversation about PVC versus ductile iron, for instance, something changed. Better products became available, better science became available, something changed. Something could change in how cash flows, something could change in a lot of areas. New construction materials will be found and discovered, and some will be better and some will be not. And codes are going to have to be modified to accommodate those things. So good ideas stay good ideas. When, when Dubuque got its first All-America City Award, one of the things that impressed the judges, and it was Rusty Knight that said it, and I don't know if he invented it or if he stole it from somebody, and I don't care, because the spirit of what he said is violated by, by believing anything different than that. He said, "We don't care whose idea it is. A good idea is a good idea." And that's where I hope that we're at. Let's keep the good ideas flowing, and, and we'll find some, find some things that work better.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Wethel.
So I know we're on a countdown here. I better speed up my comments. I will say that in the last 18 months of serving on council, I've been pretty impressed with what a city government does. I have sure learned a lot. And as we talk about the overarching goal being, honestly, population growth, I wanted to reflect just a little bit on where we are and why we are here. The Council of State Governments summed it up by their statement that in many parts of the Midwest, our birth rate is falling, people are leaving our state, and our population is aging. The goal then is to grow our city, and we touched on some of those ways tonight. First, I will say one thing that we didn't touch on is community safety, safety. And this year, this council chose to prioritize police staffing and creation of comprehensive plan for our fire department. We chose street maintenance and rehabilitation. We chose pump replacement and infrastructure projects to keep our residents safe from plumbing, or from flooding. We chose planning for an overpass and complete streets for safety related to increasing rail traffic for our neighbors, most at risk of those impacts. Second, accessibility for housing, we talked about that, and certainly it's something that I have heard from many employers as a reason that they, they just simply can't recruit people. Affordable childcare, it should be unacceptable for a young family to be told that they are in a three-year waiting list for their infant. How can we possibly expect people to enter the workforce when childcare is unreachable? I know tonight, there is something under our agenda in consent item number seven. So if anybody would like to learn more about what we're doing actively, I'd encourage you to look at that. Finally, it's a quality of life measure, and there's multiple things, I think, that impact that, promoting a culture of inclusive environments for all, and especially our residents of color, welcoming immigrants into our community wholeheartedly, sharing our bluffs and river and recreation and arts and culture, supporting structures of transportation, and supporting our airport. Everything I listed has to do with how we will grow our population. And the details we talked about tonight certainly apply to that as individual developers are bringing their concerns forward. So why did I list them all? Because we all need to see things through the same vantage point. Divisiveness is an illness in our country. Divisiveness is the typing of a text or email in the midst of our hearts and our brains frustrating, frustration or our anger, hitting send before we consider the impacts of how that message will impact a relationship or future networking. Typing something that we would never say face-to-face to another person. In the last three years, as a healthcare provider, I have been witness to such extreme divisiveness and spread of misinformation that it has taken the lives of my patients, impacting a trust in science and medicine for future generations. When I opened the letter sent to my home from business community members, not a single member had called to speak with me about the specific concerns listed. Yet the letter summarized that I was not accessible to them, and many of them had my personal cell phone numbers and had seen me in weeks and months prior. After receiving that letter, I picked up a phone because that's what I do. I started calling members to find out why they signed the letter. I wanted to know because I want to serve them, and I want to try and fix divisiveness. I want to be there to serve everyone. In those conversations, though, I understood frustrations. I could hear it. I could understand it in new ways. And so that has welcomed upon me an understanding I had not had before these conversations, which is why I am grateful for it. In healthcare, when we have a process that needs repair, we work the process. We do not scrap the process or the people involved in the process. I will not bear witness to incivility in our community, and I hope that moving forward, we have a positive trajectory with authentic goals that wrap around population growth. I want to succeed, and I want us to grow. And I don't think divisiveness will- And I don't think divisiveness will help, but collaboration will. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right.
Well, we are at the end of the work session here, so I just want to point out, first of all, I want to say a hearty thank you to Dave for the process, for, for going through this and, and working with everybody. I, I agree, it could not have been easy to, to be the moderator of all this, but I think you did a great job. So thank you very much for doing that. Wally, thank you and your department for all the, the work. A lot of this has fallen on your plate in this discussion, so we really appreciate it. But I also know it's been throughout the, the city government, so I want to say a thank you to, to everybody, city manager Van Milligan and, and everybody else. I think it's been really helpful to have these discussions, and the city's worked very hard to try and, and come up with real answers to some of the things that had been brought up. I also want to thank everybody who, who was a part of this discussion. We had a lot of people who kind of began the discussion from, from what we, we could call the business sector or the private sector, that reached out and said, hey, we got some issues and we need to talk about them. And, and I do appreciate the fact that we, that we've had that discussion, that people have reached out, and that we've been able to come to the table and, and really talk about some things. I think tonight demonstrated, we've, we've actually moved pretty far from where we were a few months ago. So I really do think this has been a very productive process, and I, I think it's been a, a great opportunity for all of us to step back and take a look at, okay, what is really going on, and how can we, how can we learn from this? I know that the city government in Dubuque has taken this as a learning experience. I've, I've been witness to that. And I think we have as a council, too. I mean, I know I've learned a ton throughout this process, and I think that that's been very, very helpful. We've identified some very specific areas. I kind of want to summarize those a little bit, because I think we've, we talked about a few of them tonight, but there are some other ones that didn't quite come up. Number one on my list is communication. We all need to do a better job of it. And I think we've learned a little bit about how that broke down in the last few years, when we tried to figure out how to communicate with each other through screens instead of talking to each other face-to-face, out of necessity, and then we just sort of did it out of convenience, and it really became challenging for us. So I think figuring out how we can fix that communication, and I just think that the, communicating more often, finding ways to be more open and discuss more openly as often as we possibly can. There are challenges with that. I think Mr. Resnick pointed it out really well. We have to have public discussions, that's who we are. We, we were elected here by the public, and we have to talk about it that way, so I think it's important that we do that. But it's also very possible. We can figure that out. We need to continue to build relationships. I think we may have assumed that our relationships had been around for so long that they were just fine. And I think we need to recognize, all of us, that relationships, even relationships that have lasted for 25 and 30 years, need work sometimes. And we need to make sure that we're continuing to build trust, continuing to earn trust and earn respect and treat each other respectfully. Along with that, we need to avoid assuming things. I'm, I'm not going to point out what assume means, but you know, we, I think that we need to avoid making assumptions about people's intentions and about what people are thinking, and really work hard to actually understand each other through that communication that I described. I think we can do a much better job of that, and I think it, it does require work, but we can do it. On the process side, there are many process improvements that I think we've learned about that we do need to, that we do need to change and improve. So I think that taking the time to do that, a lot of them were discussed tonight actively. I think there are others we can continue to work through. We need to clarify our policies, they need to be transparent, they need to be clear, they need to be fairly applied, and I think we all have a desire to do that and make sure that we're, we're accomplishing that. So I think it's something that we can continue to, to work on. And you know, as a city, and one of the things that I've heard through this process, is we need to avoid rules that can come off as being arbitrary. We need to make sure that we have a reason for doing things the way we do them, and that sometimes is, there is a law that we have passed that says that we can do that, we've got an ordinance in place. Sometimes it's a policy, but it has to have an explanation behind it. We've got to be clear about that, and I think we, as a council and as a city staff, need to make sure that we're doing things that avoid that arbitrary nature. I do like some of the specific things about land policies and ownership and leases. We need to definitely talk more about that and figure it out. And I love this idea of uniting around population growth as our guiding star. I, I do think that there is large-scale agreement on that particular issue. Quite of the conversation, quite a bit of the conversation up to this point has actually been about the past, and I think much of it's been about the distant past, and some of it has been about some more current events that have gone on. I do truly believe that I and the rest of this city council and a lot of our city staff have truly listened and heard what people have to say, and we're ready to try to make some changes here and work constructively and collaboratively on these issues together. It is, however, time to move forward, forward. It is time to stop pointing fingers at each other and looking for blame, and start pointing fingers at solutions, so we can figure out what to do together. It's just time. And I know that I'm ready to go. I believe that this council's ready to go. I've talked to a lot of people in the community who are ready to go. So it's go time. Let's do it. Let's move forward, have conversations about the future, look in solution-oriented ways, and actually do things that are going to accomplish these goals that we're all talking about. So I know that I'm looking forward to it, I'm working forward to being more collaborative just as a community in general, and I'm definitely looking forward with excitement to some great things to come, because I know we've all got it in us. So thank you very much for kind of capping this chapter off with this work session tonight. Looking forward to what's to come, and for right now, we're going to take about a one to two-minute break, and then we will start our regular meeting. So there being no further business in the work session, we are adjourned.